Thank you. Okay, reopen into public session? Mike, can you call role?
Ms. Paneki. Ms. Dress.
Here.
Ms. Rasson Clark.
Here.
Ms. Hollingworth.
Here.
Mr. Knuckles. Mr. Redder.
Here.
Ms. Sodik. Vice President Hoagard.
Here.
President Cook.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Mike, can you please read the statement concerning open public meetings?
Public notice of this meeting pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act has been given by the superintendent of schools in the following manner. On January 8th, 2025, notice of this meeting was posted on the interior of the school administration offices, 95 Grove Street, Haddonfield. Written notice was submitted and filed with the Haddonfield Borough Clerk, and notices were emailed to the Courier-Post and the Retrospect Museum.
All right, thank you. We'll move on right to presentations. We'll start with our referendum progress update with Lance Subsits.
How's it going, everybody? Happy summer. Can't believe it's almost over. You get me today, not Ron. Last month, I was fortunate to coach my son's 70 team, which is, I'm actually happy to be here. That was pretty stressful. Well, it was a long year. But anyway, work's going well. I'll let Mr. Brown speak about the construction that's happening, but for now, we'll talk to all the design projects that are happening in Maine right now. It's quite a bit. Trying to get a little bit of sleep when I can, but first and foremost, we have the 1890s building. 1890s building's going very well. We're about two weeks away from bidding that project. We have a tentative award for the 16th of October on that project. That one's going well. The structural design is moving forward, electrical design. Our substantial completion date for that project is the end of July of 2026, so that's going well. And if you want me to elaborate on any of these projects, just stop me and we can talk more about it. The bigger one, we're doing the high school auditorium design, and we're also doing the C-Wing classroom redesign from the previous bid. We're rolling into this bid as well. So that's going well. We're meeting with end users. We are about to open up our discussions to some state co-op vendors for the flooring, excuse me, for the seating again, and for the audio, visual, and lighting and rigging that space as well. That's going well. We're confirming scope with the owner. We are on target for a October 30th bid for an award in early December. With mobilization starting at the end of next school year for the secure vestibule and the C-Wing jobs, the auditorium's going to happen a little earlier. We're going to put that auditorium offline in May of 2026, following completion of the middle school auditorium, which we'll talk about in just a second. Substantial completion of the C-Wing work is at end of summer, and substantial completion of the auditorium work is the 27th of November, 2026. The next project, relocation and historic restoration work, that's a little bit on hold right now, as I think everyone's kind of on speed on there. I don't know if you need me to elaborate on that one, but it's kind of on hold. We're kind of waiting. Our next, what we want to do is get on that board agenda with the Historic Preservation Commission, which I believe is September 10th. That'll be a nice defining meeting of what our next steps are. We'll understand a lot. Which segues right into the Hopkins Turf Field amenities and parking project. That's going well. We actually did a redesign of the concept, keeping the Maggie House shed and Carriage House in its current place, and worked out kind of a better design of what that looks like. You know, I guess that's subjective, but we all liked it, we approved it. We're moving forward with that, and we're still waiting to hear back from the Historic Preservation Commission on, again, the fate of those other buildings. But that project is moving forward. As planned, our civil engineering team has mobilized their well along their way. We're looking to target the award of that in January with substantial completion in June of 2026, so nothing's changed there.
Jeff, for everyone, because, I mean, we talked about the design of that space. Can you or anyone talk about, you know, what the changes were to the design and why you liked the newer design?
Sure, yeah. So the changes previously, as we sent to the D V, we were actually relocating the Maggie House and the shed to the front of kind of Hopkins that had more of a streetscape. We thought that was a nice visual appeal from Hopkins Lane. There's a lot of kind of, you know, there's difficulties in moving these structures. So we were working with the Historic Preservation Commission, which wasn't really in favor of moving structures if we didn't have to. So we put a plan together of, okay, what happens if you force us to keep these in their current locations, including that stone wall and the start of it? What if they come back and say we need to keep this? That's why we came up with the concept two, we call it. And what it does is actually gives a few more parking spots towards Hopkins Lane, near the turf field, and a few less parking spots adjacent to the high school. But overall, it's a net deficiency of three parking spots from what we first went in. We actually find that the repositioning of the Hopkins Gym building is kind of more straddles the existing field, stadium, and the new field. And what we kind of envisioned with our landscape architect is kind of creating a plaza that in between those two new fields that connects right online in symmetry with the new Hopkins Gym. So we're actually thinking that this is going to create a more elaborate and sophisticated kind of site design approach with really not much loss of the park. So it's kind of a win-win. We don't have to move the structures if we don't want to, and we kind of get a better site concept out of it. So it was kind of a, it was a nice, what's that word I'm looking for? It was just, it happened, and it was kind of nice that it fit where it had to.
Yeah, well, thank you for the creativity. Thank you, now that's what that sounds simpler and clear.
That pathway between the two gyms looks on paper very nice.
Yeah. I'm pretty, we're pretty pumped for it, to be honest. We're excited.
You mentioned a meeting on September 10th. Is there a public meeting that you want to be there?
I believe it's public, yeah. Anyone can go to that one, yeah.
I imagine you should go.
I was like, we'll set that one up. Yeah, if you want to go.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Cool. The next project is another big one. They're all big. Tatum Elementary School Media Center addition and the library with alterations. That's moving well. We actually did a redesign to the second floor after speaking with the district, end users, Donetta, the principal. We actually incorporated, we kept part of the stage. We were originally going to delete the stage. Now we're keeping part of the stage, and we're also relocating And we're also relocating the stair from the original concept towards the front, so it's more visible from the parking lot. So now you park, you know exactly where the meeting's gonna be. A little easier to find than the space here. And it was a little bit of a redesign. It set us back a little bit, but we're back on target. Our design team is moving and grooving on that one. So October 30th is bid date for that one as well, with substantial completion August 31st, 2027.
Have we seen that? I know that I missed the last meeting. Have we seen the new design? The committee? I don't think so.
No, no. We had, we were actually in the process of redesign class when we met.
Okay.
So.
So maybe you could say it this one? Yeah.
Yeah, so we can send it over.
Okay, great.
We can send it to the L R P committee.
Yeah.
Excellent. Haddon Elementary School Media Center, same thing. Target bid date for October 30th, the same substantial completion date of Tatum's. And that's also for the Media Center second floor addition. That works going well. Our structural team is grinding on that one. That's moving nice. So we've already met with the district and end users, Jerry, the principal, there, to determine, you know, if everything meets their functional and, you know, objectives and we're good there, so. The next one's a little bit of a curveball recently. It's the A-Wing and C-Wing window replacements at the high school. We're actually 90% done with that design. We're ready to, could be ready to bid very soon. We're gonna have to meet with the Historic Preservation Commission on that one. Chuck and I sat in on a meeting last week, just to kind of preface them about the Hopkins site changes, which they love. But on that application, there was another person in there for some windows. And they got beat up a little bit, and we're wondering what we need to do with these windows. Basically, we're, we want to give them aluminum windows, the same that we have now. Durable, everything you have now, just better and upgraded. They might want us to use wood, and that's what that meeting's gonna be. To be honest, I'm here to kind of defend that concept. I don't think a school, especially operating on taxpayer money, should settle for a less efficient window, especially when we have aluminum-framed insulated windows here. So all that is, to me, is a conversation that has to happen with the Preservation Commission, and it's gonna be a good testimony by Land and whoever else, maybe perhaps secret facilities, just to kind of help them understand that situation. So that's that little curveball. Right, bid that project, and it really doesn't hold up the timeline for the start of construction or the substantial completion date. So it's just some challenge that we need to face.
Jeff, I think you pointed out, there is a difference between a private home and a municipal, a school or municipal building.
Right, right.
There is a difference in that. If I own a little Victorian house in the area, that's one thing. But this is an institution. There is a little bit of difference there.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, so that's that project. The, so now we're talking about, there's a lot of projects in design, excuse me. Now, the next segment is projects that are out for bid, which actually, I guess, we'll award later. We did receive bids last week for the auditorium project. I hope I'm not stealing the thunder, right? Okay. Received favorable bids. Everything was checked, everything looks good. Not with the contractor, they like their bid, they're ready to move forward. So we're gonna move forward on contracts and everything with that. Substantial completion for that project is gonna be April 17th. And again, we're not starting the construction of the high school auditorium, so this one's complete. So all good things there.
This is a contractor that we've used before, and we're pleased with this contractor as well.
We don't get to pick our contractor in the public bid world, but we're, I'm happy.
And when will the construction in the middle school auditorium start?
That could start whenever Levy Contracting wants to. We allow them, they can start tomorrow if they wanted to. What we're gonna do, the first step, is to set up a pre-construction meeting with them to get that understanding. They're not gonna start tomorrow, they might not start in September even.
But that's gonna take probably from, like, pretty much the whole school year through till April, you said?
Correct. Actually, it's a good point you brought that up, because really, the main timeline is for the HVAC unit that we have to replace. HVAC is kind of the critical path to all this. That takes the most lead time. The work, don't quote me on this, or maybe you should, because it's a public meeting, isn't going to take as long as April 17th. It's gonna be that HVAC unit that kind of holds things up. That's why it's that late.
So what would that look, like, how would that impair the middle, like, you know what I mean? Like, it being that long of a timeframe and people coming in and out, like, it happening during the school year? And like, are they gonna still be able to utilize some of the rooms? So none of that?
That area will be closed down.
Then what about, like, where will they be having, like, the assemblies and things like that?
The law will be, they'll use the gym for any community meetings they have.
Yeah, APR.
They will use the high school auditorium for any of those things.
No, but like, for like lessons, right? Because those are the rooms underneath.
They'll have to find other spaces in the building.
Okay.
So you're gonna see, the next one, you guys, they'll give you a hype. Next year, Elizabeth Haddon's gonna have library in a cart, music in a cart, world art in a cart, art in a cart.
Yeah.
And you just have to make, we just have to make a mark, right?
Absolutely. I'm just saying, I think that it would be, just, I think it's important for us at least even, just let people kind of be aware of that, and what to expect during the transition time. And I know we talked about that before with the building principals, but of just even, how do we even set the students up for those expectations of, you know, we know that there are certainly a good number of students who deviations in routine can really kind of wrap. So I think just of knowing that.
Well, once, we know what is happening.
Okay.
Mr. McHale'll sit down, all on it out, and take, and put everything, make sure everyone understands what's, what all the details of these shift.
Okay, sounds good.
You know, there's gonna be times when, we've had this before, like, you're shifting day to day, like, you're in your classroom for three days, you're out for three days. I mean, that's part of the nature of this.
Yeah.
And you weren't with us when, if you, you're Tatum. You saw, you saw, yeah.
Yes, yes.
We have to be nimble.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and I just wanted to be upfront with what those are and knowing that, you know, are there then certain entrances and things going to be closed off and things like that? So I think that.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll let all of that.
Okay, so that will, like, before the project actually starts?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Perfect, okay.
The main corridor is gonna be left for student use, just for eat-great reasons, and also those music rooms that are across the hall that we need to keep accessible. But contractors.
Okay, the ones up there, not the underneath ones?
Correct, the underneath ones.
Yeah, but the actual classrooms.
Contractors will need to use that at times to locate material, but, you know, it's gonna be open to both contractors and the students. So we will have to be cognizant of how we deal with that.
Yeah.
There's no interface with students and contractors that.
Okay, good.
The last thing I just wanted to bring up relative to that project that we're quite proud of and working with the district is, you know, there are some added things we added within the scope. Kind of, we strategized on how to save a lot of kind of money and resources here by pulling some scope out and going state contract with some things. Audio and visual was not originally part of the scope, but we were able to take that almost as an alternate bid, and we got really favorable prices kind of working with the districts and their vendor, which is excellent. The practice rooms downstairs were just supposed to be renovation. We designed it as an alternative bid, and we got favorable pricing there, so. And these were things that Collier's helped with as well. We're kind of working, you know, holistically as a team. It's a really nice thing. We got kind of everything on the wish list under one bucket of money for this project. So it's nice. Can't wait to see it happen, so. That's it for design projects. If there's any questions, turn it over to Rich here for construction.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your input, Elizabeth.
Thank you. All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back for a second month, because I know how many kids are all grown, but I'll start giving you a hard time. All right, so I'll talk first about the interior alterations at Elizabeth Harden. That's weather beat. Finishes are well down the road. Ceilings are all in, paint's on the wall, flooring is relatively complete. HVAC, for the most part, installed. They just did that earlier this week. They're doing, working on some controls, a fire alarm. They have, right now, tentatively set up for a final inspection on August 27th, next Wednesday, and punch list is ongoing. So right now, there's no surprises. We're in good shape. I don't see anything, no hiccups whatsoever on that project. The next one, we'll talk about flooring abatement and replacement. B and G, who did all the environmental work with Epic overseeing that with us. That's been complete for several weeks now. Central and Elizabeth Harden, Hayden, sorry. Flooring is complete. Striping was to be done today and tomorrow at both of those schools. So I didn't get a chance to catch up with Kyle, who works for me, who's on site. But, so if it's not completely done today, it'll be done tomorrow. And punch list will be follow that as well. And in Memorial High School, the flooring is ongoing. They expect to have that done on Tuesday, with striping to follow. And again, punch list as well. So we always knew that one was gonna like lag a little bit, which was the initial plan. But there's a high probability that that might even be done by the beginning of the school year. And I have two other projects to talk about. At the Memorial High School, the ADA stadium upgrades. All the work is complete. We're waiting on two items, the actual lift itself. The contractor has been trying to push to get it here earlier. The delivery date right now is showing September 5th. Once it arrives, they're gonna put it in. All the electrical, all the inspections up to that point are complete. And they anticipate one to two days, worst case. They think they can get it done in one day. So I think that's Friday, so by Tuesday, the following week, that should be done. And the wall pads as well, they're looking to be the probable, most likely, the following week. It's the target, we're being told from a delivery standpoint on that. And that, same thing, it's a one-day installation. So probably, you know, around the middle of the month, that'll be done as well. All the other work is completed. Punch list has been ongoing, no issues on any of that. The last project is the C-Wing elevator modernization at the Memorial High School. The CAD modernization is complete. The new elevator room itself, the machine room, is close, very close. We had a couple of last-minute changes from the inspectors. Two items, he made us relocate the heat sensor in there, which is being taken care of, and the relay. There was a relay that was in there that was not really compatible, a lot of the new changes. And the electrician was able to locate it and put it in tonight. So that was great news as well. The local inspection is due before the 29th. The largest and the biggest is the final inspection. The state inspection is on August 29th. I know, a little disappointed to hear that, because I think you wanted to use it that day. Most likely, I think, Mike. I know they're trying to move it up a day, but unfortunately, there's things, trying to get those inspections moved up, because there's a lot of other places that are trying to do the same inspections for schools. But we're working on it, but the worst-case scenario is the 29th will get the sign off. So a lot of good news again, pretty much, on these four projects. So, any questions? Anyone has relative to any of that information?
I just have one, and this is gonna, it'll take the place of my report for L R P. Thank you guys for making me not have to do it. But the EBKP room. So right now, we have, we're gonna have temporary windows in there, because the windows aren't. Can you just talk about that just for a moment, so that everyone has that awareness?
Yep, I had that on my notes, let's get this. So the, we did locate temporary windows. They are being installed this Saturday. So they will be started and completed in a few days. And the permanent ones, I believe, are coming in, I want to say sometime in early October.
That's what my notes say too.
Yeah. It might, it might be the second week or third week, and they'll jump right on it as soon as, as soon as they can.
Thank you both. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
We know that it's not easy to manage something and have it ready to go by the school year, so we appreciate.
Yep, oh, good.
Your working together, you're working with us, so really, it's been great.
It's a good team, you know, we, as part of the pre-construction, as the, we talked about, is that we're doing sort of a plan review to point things out, and then also doing a cost estimate, and I come up with maybe alternates, so that we have options, and we, you know, before we put up bid. But Land and their team are doing a good job, so, you know, we have some comments, not, but they're not, you know, large ones. So we're able to keep that schedule, but, you know, doing those two different reviews, so it's all good.
And we really do appreciate you coming to the meetings. It's really helpful to understand, you know, where we are and have you there for questions. So we appreciate it.
There's lots to go over, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna get more.
A lot of good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to say?
You can judge Mike's presentation.
Thank you. So I'm here to talk about the state of our facilities. I gave a presentation just like this a year ago. This is just a continuation of that presentation. So these bullet points, why do we maintain, why do we improve our buildings? Obviously, number one is my last bullet point. We have to keep in the facilities, the spaces we educate our children in, help, safe enough to help. The, the rest of this is, this is, this was from the definition of capital improvements from the Department of Education's Office of School Facilities. But again, keeping everything safe is the number one priority. As, as it says here, tying into our strategic goals. Now, a lot of our, the operations of our facilities aren't exactly discretionary. Have to keep the lights on, right? But of course, while we're here in our buildings, that's helping our kids and helping us achieve our goals. So in a sense, you could say, all of our maintenance, facilities, grounds, utility bills, essentially, they're all, they're helping all of our goals, right? All helping achieve our mission. So although they're not technically discretionary, they are helping us achieve where we're trying to go. So we do have systems in place that help us keep the maintenance of our buildings efficient. First, and number one and most important system is our work order system. It's called Operations Hero. So every time that Tim's team has something to do, either preventative maintenance in the unit vents in this room, there is a log of that happening in the work order system. When a teacher has a shade that needs to be replaced, they enter in a work order, and that's how we, one, notify our team that something has to happen. And two, once it's complete, that's the way we know it's done. And also, this ties into what's our capital forecast tool. When, when we complete projects, or when we, when we notice things may not be working the way they should be, we have a capital forecast tool that helps us know when things that are supposed to be, due to be replaced, to replace. So if we replaced a major component in a unit ventilator in one of our classrooms, like, well, maybe this just added two more years to the useful life of this unit now, just for example. That, that's gonna get updated in our system. The capital forecast tool also helps us for long-range purposes. You know, we're putting out over $40 million worth of work in this referendum project. But there's still things that we gotta take care of, that, that we didn't include in this final scope of this referendum. Those things are in our capital forecast tool that we need, know we need to replace three, five, seven years from now. So between these two systems, this is how we know how well our buildings are being maintained and what we do have to worry about and forecast budget for in the future. So wanted to point out, like, this, these are the things that help us do that. I had a whole list of a bunch of projects, major projects, fairly large improvements that we've done a year ago, and this is what we've done since I was here a year ago. So our pain crew, we did tackle a bunch more classrooms. I'll let Greg talk about that.
Russ, not fair.
No, 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 no.
I know, mine's done too, so.
So I'll let Greg talk about the exact space that we handled with it this summer. If you remember, just about a year ago, there was an issue with the air conditioning at the high school. We had taken care of that. That was, that was a big undertaking. The, the building right next to our office at 95 Grove Street, that's the 79 Grove Street, that's where our container area supervisors, who are currently at One Lincoln Ave, are going to this week, because that's gonna be one of our next projects, the 1890s building. We just restored that building inside, looks great. It's gonna be a good new home for them. The ESA project, that's all, I think everyone knows that we're doing the ESA. And actually, next month, Caroline Jackson from Honeywell's And actually, next month, Caroline Jackson from Honeywell's is gonna give us another big update for you guys. What we've accomplished and what was gonna be starting soon. Because we've tackled all of the lighting improvements, all of the building envelope improvements, and all of the building management. The building management improvements are happening within the next two weeks. They're being completed fully. The next big things for the ESA are the big mechanical improvements, HVAC improvements at the high school. That's gonna have to start as soon as the cooling season's over. So circa October, November. So that's gonna, so there'll be a lull a little bit for the ESA between the start of school and November. But that's gonna start right after we're done and we're moving kids' cooling season.
It's 60 degrees out, right? The cooling season's over.
Okay, well, no, I didn't plan this for you.
It's only over for today.
So that's what's on the horizon and what we've gotten done for the ESA. The elevator, Rich just gave the update on the elevator replacement. That's being done now. The Stormwater line repair, also part of Greg's update. The line is repaired, but that was a huge, that was actually my first emergent project I've ever dealt with. That was actually a whole process in itself. Last month, you guys approved a resolution to finalize that process. But there was another statutory line procedure I had to file with county office with Chuck to get that project moving because of the emergent nature it was. But it's done. At this point, we're talking about site restoration. What did I say, Greg, I'll tell you what. There is a classroom in Elizabeth Haddon this year that we had to totally replace the floor. Luckily, it's a summer project, only took a few weeks to repair, but it was much needed. A year ago, the bathrooms at Tatum were just about done. I'm just saying, hey, this was happening in the year, like, you know, only a couple more days left in that, after that August meeting. But they were done. And then we replaced the sidewalk out front of our office because it was a serious public, in my opinion, public hazard. It wasn't exactly a sidewalk that I think was, shouldn't be, wasn't safe. So we took care, we took care of that over our winter break last school year. So those are the more major things we took out there last year.
And they fixed the walkway in front of the high school, right? Which another county helped.
Oh, well, yeah, that's just finished. It's not, nothing that we performed, but yes, that is an improvement that happened over the, over, yeah. That was, that was, that was completed a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago.
Yeah, it looks, it looks really good, actually.
Yeah, it looked great, partially completed.
Yeah, it's like to see safe, how, like, safety, how functions.
I haven't seen the lights blink yet. Has anyone seen the lights blink yet?
I haven't, I haven't.
No?
No, because there's been construction on King's Highway. And every time I wanna go there, I can't make a left, so.
It's so, it's so pleasant.
Better to go on foot.
It will be done before Labor Day.
Because the other thing.
Wrong year.
The other thing with that project was it also supposed to be street lighting because, you know, we have board meetings, our 7 o'clock board meetings in December. I mean, it's dark out a couple hours before our meeting. That was supposed to be approved, so I assumed I was taking care of this.
They put a new street light halogen in front of my house. I don't need a light in my house. 24 hours a day, man. It's gonna brighten my life.
We hope that's what happens.
Yeah, I feel like the streetlights are really bright at the little ball, like, you know, at the light bulb. And then, but it doesn't project onto the streets. Interesting. I kinda, I know, I'm interested. We're all gonna try and do it.
So things that we have ongoing, continuous referendum projects. Again, we just had our updates on the referendum. We have things also coming up. I'll talk about upcoming ESA, just talking about through that. We're done, we're working on it, and it's happening. Same thing with preventive maintenance. Bullet point number three, never ends. That's something we're doing every single day. But what is upcoming referendum projects? I did, I wanted to, I looked in my office before I came here. Including tonight's bid for the middle school auditorium and through December, you guys are gonna be awarding contracts for over $20 million worth of projects, which is crazy. And your three big heavy hitters are additions at, addition at Tatum and the high school auditorium. Those are your three, between those three, that's a little over $12 million. So a lot going on. And then, Rock Grants, the, these roofs, once we complete these roofs, the roofs at Tatum and primarily the B-Wing at the high school, once we complete these, it'll be about at least 15 years until we don't have a roof under warranty, which is fantastic. The earliest we would complete these is summer of '26. This is dependent upon ESA and referendum work. It's with the type of roofs, I'm not talking about typically shingle roofs here. These are roofs that are, they're like the flat roofs. Typically, if you have improvements that you need to do in the bottom of the roof, you wanna do that first, then do the roof. So it's an order of operations then. The money's not going anywhere. The state's covering 40% of that bill of a $1.25 million worth of roof. It was fantastic. It's just a matter of timing and the right time to do it. So earliest, summer of '26, most likely, summer of '27. And then the new turf field, kind of very closely tangled into and adjacent to referendum work. But it is a locally funded project, I'm pointing out, outside of referendum work.
Can you remind me of what the timeframe is now for the turf fields?
I think we're supposed to award that bid in December, and it's supposed to be done in June. For the fields, the field, the field, the drainage, the infrastructure, and then the carpet, like, the turf surface itself, that's locally funded. The, what we call accessories, which is the lights, scoreboard, netting, seating. That's referendum funded. So, but altogether, it's an accounting thing for me, making sure what this, that's charged this spot, this is charged.
But now, are all those projects gonna be happening simultaneously?
Yes.
Okay, because before, we were talking about it, right? We were talking about doing, like, putting some of the groundwork in for the other things, if we could've got, okay.
But lumping it will allow us to get it better.
If we, if we could've done, if the turf could've been done earlier, yes, we would've done it that way.
Yeah, okay.
Which would've been fine, but at this point, why there's seventy's all. And then there's economy of scales there, so.
Okay.
One contractor, it'll probably be more competitive and probably more desirable to bid from a contract.
Oh, okay, yeah, so then it's now having one contractor do all that, so, okay, thank you.
So that's what's upcoming. Last year, I had some visuals here. It's hard to pick what I wanna show. So actually, I'm not giving you anything to look at. What you have to do is, you have, you have, so you get nothing. But our, you know, the referendum projects, I've got a lot of before and after photos for a lot of those. So the referendum website is certainly gonna have a lot more pictures that I'm gonna encourage you guys and the public to, to look at. Because again, I want a nice, clean after picture that you can see side by side with before, or a brand-new space that wasn't what it was. So like, I don't have before pictures of all the interior alterations that Elizabeth had because they were different spaces before. But you're gonna see the new spaces, which is awesome, you know? I've got great before or not great before pictures of the floors and what are gonna be fantastic pictures of the floors afterwards. And then new sliders as they come out. That's how we'll show off our work, too.
Great, great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg?
Yeah, we met yesterday for segment. It's been a busy week. We really focused in this meeting with our Katie Russo's walking through some pretty high level, the curriculum map modifications that occurred. When we were talking, much of it was around ELA courses at different grade levels and changes that had been made based on the ELA audit and teacher input. Wanna emphasize, you know, the, there was lots of really great conversation. And essentially, for the majority, they were relatively modest tweaks, but not for all. In some cases, we were expanding the number of already board-approved books, for example, to support certain courses. And, yeah, there were, Katie really did a pretty phenomenal job walking through in great detail. I'm trembling to read my notes here. Emphasis, for example, I'll just draw an example for the accelerated grade nine, changes around understanding that the volume of reading remains really crucial for kids, thinking about college preparedness, making sure that we have the right kind of volume of approved texts, already-approved texts to be incorporated. That was one example that stuck out. And Katie talked about the fact that these maps are always living documents. They're a framework. They support teachers having consistent information. And the maps themselves are, you know, can be modified as needed based on feedback. We talked about many, many, many maps. And I think, yeah, what captured my attention right at the end of the conversation, and I imagine Gino may have additional ads to share, but we talked about a new emphasis on executive functioning programs, starting with kids as young as the third grade because it is clear that kind of thinking about your thinking, as Katie called it, and softer skills around how to gather information and organize it, how to be, you know, able to understand and structure your day. And the information around you will help you to be successful, really for all kids, whether we're talking special ed or general education. And that Gino pointed out, this is an example of, an area of emphasis that our Title II funding helps to support, which is great news. And it's a really good example, I think, of the school district and, you know, Katie and team and teachers understanding and listening to feedback from, you know, parents and teachers about what kids need more of, so that the softer skills count too and that that's also part of supporting, supporting our kids even beyond the curriculum map conversation. That's all I got, Gino.
That's good.
I didn't even have a chance to type them yet, but I will tomorrow.
Yeah, so we have about 18 maps that are being, that are either new or revised, which again, just demonstrates our commitment to always looking back, improving the work that we're doing, and not just putting a curricular document together that goes on a shelf and never to be revised again. So we're really proud of the work that we're doing. A lot of the new science courses will be on for approval in September. And that's a good note to make, that all these maps will be on for September. Because we knew with having our curriculum committee yesterday, it didn't afford the board enough time to look over what will be about 25 either new or newly revised maps for review for approval.
Okay, and are they linked, they're linked on the minutes everyone will have, right? Those maps? Just want, because I don't, I don't want, I, just to give them as much notice as possible.
Yeah, it should be, because we just take it from the agenda.
So when you have your minutes, just add it into, you know, make the edits.
On my, yeah, you gotta do that.
So that way, everyone can have the minutes.
Thank you. I just wanted to add in there, too, like, I thought it was really great to see how some of like the new software programs or, you know, things like that, how they're like interacting in with these maps. Like, Gino, you were talking about the iReady, right? Like, moving that from fifth into sixth grade, but like, looking through the maps of like, okay, so we have these technologies. But here's how we're utilizing them in the classroom at and at these times. But then also, the emphasis, even just getting that input, not just from our district, but I think Katie was bringing up too, of like, for students that have gone to college or college professors, of increasing the stamina by reading longer texts. And so it's like that, you know, I just wanted to point that out because I know we've had some comments on that of, you know, online versus reading and screen time and this and that, and I think it's showing a nice balance through these maps.
Yeah, and that's one of the bigger issues students going into college are facing is that the middle and the high school have been diluted so much that they're not getting full, like, novels and tests.
Stamina is the word Katie, that she was saying.
When they get to college and they're like, wow, I read a whole book. So we just approved The Mirror Wife, which Tommy's supposed to read. And so it's been sitting on his desk, and so I started reading it, and I'm loving it. But, um, but as I, right now, I'm the, I'm the only one in the household. But I'm enjoying it, so.
Alan, your son.
He's still got to.
That was something we identified two years ago that we're continuously improving. Increasing the rigor and the volume and the frequency with which students are reading whole group novels, not just listening to them in the classroom. Really engaging authentically with the text. I'd give Katie a lot of credit for identifying that as any following-through on that, implementing, reflecting, and refining that work. It's, it's.
Well, and even like the, sorry, the summer reading where they were talking about for the high school of just annotating it. And then, instead of having to write or do some, like, she said it was what, a handwritten on-demand test, like, in the first week or two of school? So it's like, you're really just getting an understanding of where the students are, not with, you know, what could be done and tweaked, you know, even typing into a computer.
Yeah, and one of the things that I like is that the focus on both contemporary texts as well as your classics. Because it's, I feel like schools tend to go so far one way or the other, but there should be that cultural literacy that we all have read certain texts. Like, I still do think that. I know, you know, you're an English teacher too, right? Don't you think?
Yeah, I do.
Like, but, but I think it's the contemporary stuff that tends to get, to get people to wanna be readers. So The Mirror Wife is the contemporary retelling of, well, okay, so it's still good.
Along those lines, they've also turned an article about the loss of traditional novels that are disappearing out of our schools.
It is, yeah.
And you're right about the importance of still maintaining that in our district. That's really important.
Yeah, you need that shared cultural literacy. Yeah, there's value in the classics, but that's why you have to, and it is hard for so many great.
All those classics, they're just, in some districts disappearing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, and I'm in a lot of schools and I say it, they're just not, and that's not there.
Speaking of this, so last summer, we talked about the choices of summer reading and talked about, you know, the balancing what those texts might be versus just getting kids to love reading. And I don't know, because I don't have kids in school anymore. So what did happen? Were there any changes to the summer reading?
Well, one of the major shifts, we're not having these laborious projects that students were doing over the summer. We want students reading texts to enjoy the reading. There, well, you know, but there has to be some level of accountability piece, and that's where, that's gonna happen in the classroom when students return from the summer. So that's just a minor shift in how we're looking at this.
Yeah, the thing I like about the 12th grade was that they're reading the modern Beowulf on their own, which you can do, right? But if you're reading Beowulf on your own without any context, you're going to, you're not really, you're probably an English teacher.
I would always say, I don't know, when I was, I never, I would say that I was an English teacher, but when I became an administrator, like, what's the best book you read this year? So maybe sophomore, maybe it's Catching a Eye. How'd that be your summer reading? Oh, no, no, I wanna talk with the kids about that when they read it. It's like, that's part of the challenge, you only give away the joy, right? You wanna be with them when they experience that.
Right, yeah.
Or I would say, you know, Slurgh House 5, like, that's a great one to read with kids. But it's one, if you gave it to them on their own, they would read.
Yes.
And that's a challenge, like, that really would build a good reading. When I was, I always, when I was teaching sophomores, I would be the last book I would read. Something about Vonnegut and 15, 16-year-old boys, they just catch on. This is when the used bookstores to be on the corner, which, you know, it's off the, um, anyway, all the sophomore, we go and buy all these Vonnegut used books, they pass work, okay. They should've given them some, like, no, I'd like to talk to them about it.
Yeah, that's true. We need a Chuck's Book Club, like Oprah used to have in Boston, for, not mandated, just.
Why, they wouldn't like that reading, like, old man stuff. Why, they wouldn't like that reading, like, poor old man stuff.
Any other questions for Mike? Greg, do you have a couple of things to add or for you?
Couple of things, C wing out later, Mike said, we got it done by the twenty-ninth. Hopefully Stormware Pipe repairs, just a little side work needs to be finished. These are progress we gave. There's a chiller, water line leak at the high school. It was fixed. The only negative is the weight room will not have air conditioning until further notice. Until that long-term solution is fixed. But wrestlers are always trying to lose weight on here.
Get the sauna.
Yeah. The paint crew was very successful in the C wing. They painted twenty-four classrooms.
Wow.
Some more in the B wing. They did a bunch of touch-up in the music room, choir room. Six students did it. The finance committee said, well, why can't we have twelve? When it came to a management issue, so we're going to keep it at six. But the kids did a great job and the management was very good. The stadium bathrooms, we got bids back, forty thousand dollars to upgrade them. There's sinks, the faucets, the dryers, wall wrappings, floors. I believe we're having discussions with booster clubs to try and raise the money for that. The spray blower, as we know, burst in the library in high school caused a lot of damage below. And right now, we are, any update on the floor materials?
Starting installation today.
They have to have done it one day.
Oh, wow, okay, that was, could have been.
Which is better than what I told you.
Yeah, that's right. I think Mike reviewed tuition rates and they're in for approval. Preschool state, it went up a little bit just to make sure we weren't losing. Extended at kindergarten stayed the same. Middle school tuition went up, I think, three percent. Again, to try not having it a loss. High school tuition stayed the same, and the international stayed the same. And then topics for future discussion, which I think Mike sent some information out, is facility use fees, which we need to consider. How we're going to do it, if we're going to increase, who we're going to charge, how that's going to work. Make sure we lease. The one thing I found interesting is that what you sent around that, the different school starts for air conditioning, electricity, just little surcharges. And now with the electric.
Yeah, yeah.
So what you guys asked me to do is, I, what I did was is like, three typical spaces. And what we charge versus what others charge. So for audit, and this is for class three, which gets like the lowest priority. So that'd be to maybe a for-profit company that just wants to use any of these spaces. So we charge our auditoriums four hundred hours for single use. Others charge two hundred fifty to four hundred hours per hour, plus a performance fee. A gym, we charge four hundred dollars per use, for single use, which a lot, a lot of other schools I saw, they'll, they'll at a rate if they do hourly, but they'll do it like, okay, first four hours is this rate, and then a quarter of the rate, so.
Per use, do they mean by day?
A day, like a single use, so which comes down to like, what's that?
Like a game?
Yeah, like.
Okay, so I got it.
So if I, if I had a wrestling tournament, I came, I got the gym for the day, it'd be four hundred hours.
Yeah, for here, for, for us here, for here.
Yeah, okay, that's a, so it doesn't really, which almost seems unfair that the person is using it for one game versus a twenty.
Yeah, so for a gym, I put us about a hundred hours an hour if I'm taking that four-hour metric. Others charge a hundred twenty-five to two hundred hours an hour. And for Artur Field, we charge four hundred hours for, for a single use. You could use it all day, it's four hundred hours. Others average about three hundred hours per hour.
But yeah, I mean, it makes sense to at least think about it. I definitely think that we're missing the mark by having all these per use, because it doesn't really clarify.
And we do want to clarify, that's class three for people.
Lowest priority. That's, that's the most.
That's not our use force, it's that there's, there's a different rate for those, for those. Significantly less.
And then we also talked about, and I know, I'm sure you guys are having these discussions, whereas if we're charging a rate, for example, for the auditorium, then we should include in that cost the support people that they need. Or we charge less and we make it very clear that we won't have the support people. But I don't know, you know, so anyway, I just think it's important we keep in mind the support people necessary, any additional costs. And that we factor those in or charge additional for that.
Well, and then, so I guess are we, so in moving to a per hour versus like a per day, would you then, like, then people would have a specified number of hours that they've been a lot, right? Because you're saying like, okay, if you, it's four hundred dollars and then they did use it all day. But like, what if they only need it for like an hour or two in the morning? Then another, you know, group could use it, you see what I'm saying of like?
Yeah, that's.
And then also that you're not over, right?
We're just starting the conversation with Mike.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think it's really important, like, yeah, let's, let's just be clear for everybody. This is not like, we haven't set numbers, it's not per hour, these are.
These are more, and these are groups that aren't, aren't had and fielded.
This, this is a unique animal in that there's a policy, which is the language of, what's a, what's a group one, what's a tier, tier one, tier two, tier three? What are we charging for? So the policy committee's had this for three months, four months? Three months, and we nail, we nail that down, so that'll be the language. The financing will say, okay, what, how, how are we charging them? How, how much they charging, and how we charging? That's going to be the finance, so it has to go back and forth. And one of the things we discussed with finance, and this, this is the, almost throw on the end of a conversation, say next month we're talking about this. Like putting out the, costs go up, right? So maybe we put in there, it's going to expect to go up three percent a year, or whatever. We'll, we'll figure that out.
In line with.
In line with, that way our users know, okay, I, I know that it's going to cost me X this year. It's going to cost me X plus two percent, or whatever, whatever would come up. So that'll be part of what we're going to do.
Part of what, okay.
Yeah, so, and we, we are also talking about trying to nail this and finalize this in the next five or six weeks. But this won't go into effect for a long time. That way those groups who are using our facilities can plan and prepare. We're not going to just drop them on the last second. So that's, that's a big part of what we're doing as well.
And then I guess, just another like logistical question too of, I mean, I know we're going to be communicating this stuff, but like, let's say with some of our outside groups that do tend to use our facilities, right? Like, knowing that there's going to be certain parts of our facilities that are going to be going offline during construction for a number of times, like, are we like communicating with them ahead of time? You know what I mean, like?
Yeah, I, I don't think, Mike, fair, so no one's, like, the, the theater watch groups know that, they all, they all know what's happening.
Yeah, like they know, and they know that there's probably going to be about this. But like, I, and I guess where I'm also kind of going with this is that obviously they're going to find other facilities if they need it during those time periods. And, you know, do we want those same group, like, you know?
Well, we don't really have too many outside groups. So that's not a problem, yeah, that's not going to be a problem.
Okay, okay.
Although we would expect with the auditorium updates, you might get more.
Yeah, and, and we, we hope to maybe be able to do that. But we really need to find.
But that would be, we, that's a down-to-line thing.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Greg? All right, Matt?
Well, I can't believe Gino just walked out. I won't give you that on purpose. Eighteen first readings at last meeting. And I know what you're thinking, how in the world did you mean to be done in an hour? Because a lot of these first readings were like reading a piece of dry toast. It, a lot of mandated stuff, a lot of minor, minor revisions that do not impact the way we do business. I don't know how deep the weeds want me to go on this stuff. I'm just getting some high notes.
Yeah, and we were, they were linked, so we were able to read them all.
Yeah, okay, good, so you get it.
So, yeah.
Most, like I said, most, all of these were mandated. I'm not going to get into the weeds about what the role of the accountant is or that sort of stuff. You will see in there a couple of things, I think, of note on the substance abuse. And that was an interesting policy revision, because it basically cut in half the amount of time that someone would be out of school to, from thirty to fifteen days.
For the extracurriculars.
For the extracurriculars, excuse me, yes, for the extracurriculars. So that was a significant change. There's a lot of other details in that, so you're right. I put in bold there at the end, you're encouraging all the changes in that regulation for full understanding of substance abuse. Gino, thank you. Uh, we're, you know, we're reviewing the eighteen first readings, but we're just hitting the high notes.
They're all boring, most of them.
That's what I told him, I said, it's like just reading dry toast. We have a new sun protection policy though.
This is on my list of things.
That was the one that was pretty exciting, yeah.
That one was hot.
Did anyone, you couldn't administer sunscreen?
This is what I don't understand, like, why, why sunscreen? Like, so what about hand sanitizer or hand lotion?
I think it's sunscreen technically, like, or at least how it was before of like, it's a, not a medication, but it's like.
But it was treated that way.
It's a, yeah, it was unnecessary, I'm playing, it was a barrier.
Or Advil.
Yes, that a teacher cannot put sunblock on a student. I will say, I don't know, just as like when kids are little, you know, things like that. I'm just like, even if, and I think that the kids can't administer, they technically couldn't administer it themselves, right? Was that the previous policy? Because, yeah, I know things that like.
We had the policy.
No, yeah, there wasn't, there wasn't an over policy preventing it.
No.
However, it, it was technically considered, like, if a student was on the playground and, and took out some sunscreen, technically that's a.
Technically is contraband.
And it falls onto the same, the same thing as if a student's taking.
It's like cough drops.
Cough drops, yeah.
I mean, like, we might want to, we might want to update that one.
Honestly, this is why I'm going down this, because I saw that it was new. I'm assuming it's not mandated.
Yes, it is, it is made it. Governor Worthy said it is made it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, because I'm like, well, well, why? Well, then, well, do we need one for hand sanitizer? And do we need one for, for body washes? And do we need one for perfume?
I'm going to go out of the limit, I'm going to say no.
Yeah, that's why it's mandated.
No, I don't want one, I want one this season.
Yeah, like, why, why are we doing it?
I can say we're very progressive. I've seen field days, where I've seen principals walk around and put sunblock on children. And then high school principal walking around with sunblock, saying stuff. So we've been rebels in the sunblock.
All right, trailblazers. That's the best place.
And now your cup. I think another thing of note, a couple of things of note. One is the abolishing, first time we've abolished a policy, oh, oh, I always, well, I'm aware of. Abolishing the record keeping for healthcare settings in the schools related to COVID. So that is abolished. Again, most of these that we reviewed, there was really little to no debate. Couple of comments here and there that were included were appropriate. Other than that, these were, because they're all mandated, minor changes, we go right through them. Another thing, and you're going to touch on it a little bit, Michael, is we did talk about facility usage, which we just talked about a second ago. And essentially from our side on the policy side of things, Michael recommended no changes to the current class classifications. Sound quite right, current class definitions that are already stated. And then, as you heard earlier, additional research is being done to make sure that we're charging appropriately for extracurricular camps and other groups. It will continue to be transparent of the process, which we have been. But this is still in process. Those are the main, the main issues. If you want to dive any deeper into what the roles of our accounts are and like that, we can certainly get into, but that was the, we did get.
Yeah, I know, and I wasn't at the meeting, I was in Portugal, so I was. I was, but it was tightly run.
It was very, it was, it was astonishing, great job, not because we all said there's no way we're going to do this in an hour. And he kept us right on point, so. Took it as a challenge. Yeah, we appreciate that very much.
Can you tell me the reasoning about the change in dates having to do with substance abuse?
Yes, so the thrust of that is the students who typically are going to engage in substance abuse issues tend to not be as connected to activities and events as other students. And when they are, we want to make sure that if there is a violation, that we keep them more, not less engaged. For example, let me pull up what, what is it? Now I'm not finding it, of course. But it was like for a first offense, it was forty-five days being banned from extracurricular activities. And we think that's not a really student-centered way to help support a student who is obviously maybe having some issues. So instead of forty-five days, it goes down to fifteen or thirty days, whatever it was. And.
First offense was thirty, goes down to?
Thirty to fifteen.
Thirty to fifteen. And, and while they still wouldn't be allowed to participate in a competition during that time, they're now permitted to maintain daily practice.
And be part of the team as opposed to isolated.
So it, it, it.
The reasoning makes perfect sense.
It goes along with our sense of belonging, our sense of engagement. I think students have a greater likelihood to get, to remediate whatever challenges the top classes are having.
And not be further withdrawn, which is what you really. And I think accountability, accountability is the other thing that we talked about, that when you're a part of a team, and the team is all aware that Bobby's not there because of X, that it's a good thing for a kid to be back when it's appropriate and to get that reinforcement. We're glad you're here, and also to feel like.
It might be tougher sometimes if you're there and practicing, that they need you on the field. You need to get on the field.
Well, that's, that's part of the accountability part, yeah. That's things, and it should.
So this came, this, this big part of this came from when Tam and I met with, at the Code of Conduct. This is one of the big topics was, you miss thirty days, you're done. That's, that's seasons, so your, your nest is taken away from something that was, was, for many people, was most, was important to them. And so this is a way to keep kids involved in, in a, in a building where, when you think about the numbers, if there's eight hundred, eight hundred students in the building, roughly six hundred and fifty of them are staying here for school and doing something. So, you know, so the hundred or whatever, you're taking someone who wants to be that and saying, no, you're disconnected from this. And we didn't think that was, since we are going away from purely punitive actions and trying to make them more growth, and that, that, that'll fit in.
I like it.
I feel like this is a good balance. We're not getting away from, yeah, there's still suspensions.
And those days were.
This is after ten days, but this is after they're ten days out. Then this is, this is there for that.
Yeah. Okay, I like it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Matt? Lynn, did you have anything for LR update? I think they covered it, and no PTA updates, right? Dr. Creola, do you have anything?
Two, two things I want to talk about. One, Meg referenced earlier, at the last meeting, I talked about the uncertainty of our Title II A funding, which supports additional funding for professional development for the school district. We were thrilled that that funding was restored. And actually had a little bit of a higher clip than we received in the past. We averaging around twenty thousand, we got about twenty-six thousand this year. And we have already started planning with our administrative team how we're going to be allocating that funding. One of the things we're talking about is an executive functioning curriculum to be put into grade three. That's something that the curriculum committee will be tackling next month. That's exciting. And also want to point out, one thing on the agenda is for the board to approve activities for highly effective teachers. And what that means, give you a quick primer on teacher evaluation. All, all teachers are required to be evaluated every school year. Non-tenure teachers three times a year, tenure teachers two times a year. For tenure teachers, one of those two evaluations has to be unannounced. One is announced. What the state now has put in place are alternate activities to replace the announced observation for highly effective teachers. A highly effective teacher is a teacher who has a summative rating at the end of the school year of a three point five or above. It's a scale zero to four. And it was really limited in the past. There were only one or two things that teachers were able to do to replace that. Now there are six different activities. And it goes from leading an in-district professional development, and that would replace their announced observation. They would still have to have their unannounced. Same for non-tenure teachers. It would replace their, one of their announced observations. They would still have two unannounced observations. A data protocol review, something that would directly impact functionally, something that you're doing in the classroom. Being able to go observe a colleague and write a reflection about it, that could replace it. An action research project, something that's of interest to that particular teacher. Digital capture, which is just a video recording and an analysis of their lesson. And then a reflective practice through student perspective, which I think is actually the most interesting one, because it's just like a, so say a, a teacher decided to implement a pre and a post survey on engagement, or what you think of me as a teacher? so say a a teacher decided to implement a pre and a post survey on engagement or what you think of me as a teacher. It could be really anything that's approved by the principal, uh, and that would replace one of their observations. So something much more functional. Uh, I I think a little bit creative. So we were really excited to see this come down the
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, those are really cool. I mean, I think that's such a nice way too to like have our especially like our high performing teachers even give back. And it makes them feel, I think, a little more valued to be able to do this.
Yeah, that's great. And we actually have so many teachers during our professional development that do professional development anyhow.
Right.
Um, and and now to be able to give them a little bit of a reprieve for their announced observation, we think so win-win.
That's great, Tim. All right, uh, Mr. Klaus?
Yes. So I've got so to you. So, uh, I gave a little bit of insight, send you guys a little bit ahead of time. On August thirteenth, we had broadcast Department Ed, which is the statewide assessment schedule for the statewide testing. Um, no one I know who does what I do or Gino does for living happy with some of this, um, or any of any of this, I don't know. So they gave the announcement of a new statewide assessment. So now the NJ S L A and the NJ G P A are going to be adapted tests. Much like the S H E is one of those. This is brand new. This, no one knew about this until like, I shouldn't say that. Big guy, don't read my broadcast. This is out of left field for a lot of people.
I don't, yeah.
This came
The general
And part of it was when this was happening, Pearson, who's a current testing company, was suing to stop this because they're losing their testing contract to Cambio. And this came out as soon as Pearson also there, or Lawson. So once that was settled, this was announced the next day. Now, they had been out, there had been hints about there. And so the department, if you read closely enough, you would have understood this, but this is happening. Um, so that's a big change. Um, especially for, I mean, NJ G P A, that's as high stakes as high stakes as we get in high school because that's how you graduate through that town. Um, more interesting is there's field testing involved with this. Now, we don't know the details, but we, this is what you go to their website. Um, the NJ G P A has field testing from October twenty seventh and November fourteenth for eleventh and twelfth graders. Even though twelfth graders doesn't impact, they're involved in field testing. Um, I'll put the caveat, I don't know, I don't believe they're gonna do the full barrage of field testing everywhere. I would think they would likely say, hadn't towns was gonna do this test, hadn't been doing this test. This population to scare us further around the state. But this is this is the information taken, copied and pasted from the website. Um, interesting to note that our our marking periods for our our middle school and high school end October thirtieth, which means them are off the next week. So we are going to be testing the week coming back from fall break. That's where we're doing our testing.
And it's not, it's it's there's no, um, there's no ramifications for these tests?
No.
Just field tests, okay.
Um, and then for the fourth through tenth graders, you can see that that there's going to be field field testing, the same dates um, in math in the L A. Um, so once again, I don't know, I I find it hard to believe they're gonna make the fourth graders take a full barrage of six days of testing. But we're waiting for that. The other curious thing is this is now a new platform with a new software. No one has seen it yet that I know, well, I've seen it. We have, I have not seen it. I'm gonna speak for Chuck. Chuck has not seen it yet. We have the trained teachers on it. We have to make sure our tech people are comfortable with it. So there's a lot of stuff going on here right now that hit all at once. Who do they get in this situation?
Is there funding coming from the state in order to assess?
I knew it, but I figured I should ask.
You should.
The state's not giving us funding for this training.
If you think about it, the the other side of it, we got away from a lot of benchmark testing because we were over, we felt we were over testing students. And now here we're taking another test. Um, and I I will be cynical, Chuck, for a so for a moment. I don't know who thought that you're gonna take a twelfth grader and give them as a a field test, doesn't matter to them at all, and think it's gonna be valid.
At a time where they're they're very concerned about everything.
Applying for college and all those.
And if these are the adaptive tests where the question's changed, which, so I'm sorry, I don't know how those are good for your brain.
Um, you know, I'll talk later about something. And these are the testing dates. So the NJ G P A is March sixteenth through the twentieth for grade eleven. This is real. This counts. This is it. This is what they they have to pass to the graduate high school. And then they get, that's a one week window. You'll notice I'll get that in a second, three through nine for math. April twenty seventh through May twenty second, so there's a much wider window there. I bring this up for two reasons, to let you know the testing is changing and the test dates, but more importantly, um, sixteen, March sixteenth through the twentieth, we have a two hour delay on Wednesday that week currently. Which means we have two options. We don't test on Fridays generally. We're trying to test on Fridays and Mondays specifically. If we can't, there's four days of testing for the NJ G P A, four tests. We, if we want to avoid Friday testing, which we do, we would have to stack the tests and have the kids take two sections a day. Or we have to move that two hour delay to the twenty fifth. Um, so I'm gonna come back with a revised calendar, probably thirteenth revised calendar. I can't believe we can't do this. But I would, I'm recommending moving that two hour delay so we don't have to stack the tests.
Yeah, I agree.
If this were the NJ S L A, I would stack the tests, right? Because it's not, this is not that test though. So that's why I really think it's strongly important. So that's there. Any questions about calendar change and testing? Um, classroom officer, we are now finalizing details of reinstated. We will have a officer in place with first aid school. Been working with Commissioner Troy and Chief Cutler for shared service agreements. As a matter of fact, I got an email from them outlining detailing job responsibilities and how it'll be split between the borough and the school. And they're gonna help pay for the officer, so that's a that's a shared service agreement. That's that's gonna make this really possible for us to do. I I also have this as a side note, we had a very, I felt a very positive meeting with the with the commissioners. Commissioner Troy's been great working within this. Um, we're meeting with Mayor Seidel to talk about field usage and and as we do our field use policy. Make sure there's some consistency between the borough and us, so, um, I I feel really good about some of the working relationships we're having now in the borough. I think that's very important and I I have, and the borough, the cross street from high school, the same thing that was borough work with county to do that. So I feel very good about the direction we're moving along with the borough because we we should, we should be working in step and I think we're getting that vibe. Uh, that makes me feel much better about a lot of things. So I'm really happy for that. I might have to thank Commissioner Troy for his work with that. But we are gonna come out of our funding, some of our funding. This is where it's coming from. So breakage and breakage, for those who don't know, is when we hire a teacher to replace a teacher, the salary difference. We cannot budget breakage. Um, it's impossible. We have had break years where breakage is six figures. Um, we've had years where breakage is nothing. This year it's about eighteen thousand dollars. So we can take that breakage and help this out. You can see where they, I think it was two, almost two hundred thousand dollars last year. It's two hundred thousand dollars last year. It's eighteen thousand dollars this year. So you can't budget to use that money.
So far this year, so there's still money in here.
There's still, there's one more person left to hire, I think. So hopefully hire well there. It'll stay around eighteen thousand. Um, but it it is a case where the person who left was low on sale and we cannot find anyone to hop top of the scale, would be negative breakage issue. That's still out. Um, P T, President Dylan, tuition reimbursement. This is money we contractually must budget. So our administrators and our teachers, our A T A members in in the contract, we have to budget, I think it's forty five thousand dollars.
Thirty five for A T A, fifteen for
So fifty grand. We have to budget because if people take classes, we have to reimburse them. I actually polled the administrators and and got who's planning on taking coursework. We know we're not gonna spend that money, a bunch of that money. So we can take that money there. But the key is we have to, we have to budget that. We can't just say that's found money.
Yeah.
And by the way, if all the administrators aside, in January to take classes, we still gotta pay for them.
Yeah.
Right? We, this is not, this is, we can't say, no, this is, we're rolling the dice because someone may say, hey, I decided to take a course, we have to, we have to do that. Um, the next one, and this will be a precursor for things to come. Athletics, we are two coaching positions, um, where numbers would dictate we probably don't need. One is middle school assistant field hockey, the other is J V softball. We will not be filling these positions. We have not had a J V softball team for the last two years, so we're not gonna fill that. And the middle school, uh, field hockey is down, we're not filling that. The reason I say to look at that is we've now gone through two years of budget cuts. We looked at a lot of things. The word athletics has not been seen on the screen yet.
Yeah.
Um, we've seen clubs and activities, we've seen everything else, but athletics has been hitting supplies, but this is the first time we're hitting here. Um, years ago, when Christie made the cuts, um, we were one of the few schools that kept precious sports. Everyone else, we cut, we cut it to eighty percent. Everyone else got rid of it. Um, because we don't, we want kids involved, right? That's what we want to do. But this is a place we have to look hard next year when we do things come across. We have teams with a hundred kids on. That's great. But, you know, and and by the way, I coached almost sixty seasons of sports. You know, I coached, I had three seasons. Every time I was taught, like this, this is, this stuff is really important to me. But I'm looking at what we're doing now, it's like eventually that's gonna be an area we have to scratch and and we're fortunate right now, these these coaches will probably go unfilled anyway, so we're fortunate there. But that's an area we have to look at in the future. And even things like traveling for athletics, right? So if we have J V wrestlers are going to tournaments, they're optional. And we have to put people on buses and the buses there for twelve hours and coming back like, okay, maybe we can't do those tournaments anymore if it's come up with those sort of things. So that's stuff we're gonna be looking at. And then we got lucky. The last one is just pure happenstance. We had an English teacher opening and we had a part-time theater arts person. We found a teacher who certified in both and we combined the positions and they made it work with the schedule. Tammy disimagined with the schedule, made it work. And that saves some money there. Um, so that happened. The important, the last thing, this officer represents point one, two percent of the tax levy increase. So if we were not to make the cuts and just say, okay, we were two point nine four, we'd be three point oh six. That's what this is. I, well, I'm gonna recommend it when we're, when Mike's talking in in about budget. We're gonna come up with our school budget. I'm, we're gonna say, and here's the one point one, two percent that this officer causes. Because the community told us this was more important than teachers.
Yeah.
So, not the whole community, many people, some people, I said, that was a misstatement. For those listening. That was part of the feedback we got, was that that's that important.
Yeah, it was a funny word.
And so what, so I think we're gonna separate that out and say, here's our, here's our operational educational budget, here's our safety budget.
Yeah.
And make sure that's understood because we got, we we heard, not just from the people who came and spoke, but many emails that this is that important. So this is where we are with that.
And and they specifically said, we don't care. We would rather you raise our taxes. So we're listening to the community, but it comes at a cost.
And a huge amount of work. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for
Mike did most of it.
Being so responsive and looking under every rock.
Um, Miss Alena's district smart goals, I was hoping to have them with you, um, but we really went back and forth and we actually started kind of torn down more than we thought we were going to, we were gonna build off the old ones. And then the new assessment came in and how do, how do we base this assessment off of rates and scores? So we're trying to look at that. The other thing we talked about as a leadership team, like we're gonna set goals high. Um, and if we don't get them, okay, that's not, that won't be had, but but we're not gonna just make these goals easy because we have a test we don't know what to come out. So we still have to keep integrity. We're gonna set high standards that we do for our kids, that we do our teachers, and we're gonna try to make these goals happen. Um, so I hope to have those for you by by the September meeting. Um, the problem right now is this week and next week and the week after that, there's no time to meet and talk about goals with principals. Um, they have other things to think about right now, so. Um, Tammy did something new this year. Um, we have, she had a senior orientation. She, um, they brought guidance counselors in. And they had two sessions. I sat in one. Um, and it was basically, you know, you know, put your helmet on, put shin strap on, this is what college application looks like. And this is what it looks, this is what you get prepared for. Have you done this yet? No, didn't do it today. They sat down in small groups. They locked their common apps to their to their Navi accounts. They went over all the things and went, it was a deep dive into getting ready to apply for college if you haven't done so already. So now the kids got that done. When school starts next week, they're actually like two, a week or two ahead of that. Um, and a lot of positive feedback. I mean, I I sat and it was very well done, put together by the counselors, hats off to them. But I I think we had talking to the kids, I think you had kids go, just said, I'm so happy I went. So out of a hundred and eighty
I'm happy, you know, I think as a parent, I'm really happy too because I think the kids appreciated it, but I
Yeah, I think what what made me happy was, you know, like the puffing and puffing. What do I do this for you? Dude, how was it? It was awesome. Hold on. Really, really good. I'm like, oh my God, that's awesome.
Uh, and it's amazing, I will tell you this, I've been out of high school for six years, seven, eight years, eight years. It's not even the same application process when I was, I could have told you chapter and verse of the application process when I was a principal. It's not the same. I imagine next year is not the same. So it's really beneficial. It was great. Um, and as a follow-up on that, when the P S A Ts are being given, um, Tammy's gonna put together some workshops for for the seniors to come in and do things. And one of the ones, we could example of what talking about, um, essay, college essay writing. And you have your first essay written, but now you start getting your secondary, tertiary essays, like and have guests come in. And we'll probably recruit some people to come in and help out. So we're trying to get the English teachers to do it, but I'll probably sit in and do some. I I think
Yeah, I said I'd do some.
Jamie helps, so we'll, we'll be looking for some people who can do that. And that'll be more information like that. But that's a lot of good stuff. One of the things when we sat and met with seniors, I said, we, I sat in with Tammy, she met with seniors. The pressure of was happening now because the college applications are coming. I just said the marking period ends October thirtieth to thirty first. October fifteenth is the first series of growing decisions now. November first is the main first deadline now. So all this is happening, end of the first marking period, all this is happening, all at the same time. You know, so this break for them, this jump for them is significant. So that did good things.
I think it's amazing.
And the amount of schools with supplementals.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the college essay is just one thing and then there's you have
Yeah, so we got three.
Yeah.
And the Y O S essays killing the kids. That's the one they they can't stand. Why, why, why are we a good fit for you? It's just a big, it's a hard essay, right? Um, so we have, we had a couple of students in the news. Audrey, uh, our swimmer, um, she's the junior world champion. She's in Romania right now. She's won two gold medals and she has set a junior world record, a championship record. She's doing very well. She's a junior. Um, Charlie Webb, he used to sit between us and me.
I know, I know.
He's representing America in the Pan Am Games. He's playing for the men's national field hockey team. So he's down in play, he's playing in the Pan American Games, which is great. That's fun. Um, and then a couple of other quick things is, um, next month, we're gonna be talking about academic calendars. I give you guys a preview of that. I sent you I asked to update it all. I'll present that and we can talk about if we just wanted to stay the course, which is fine, or if we want to try to tweak it here or there. Um, teachers are in next week, Monday, it's new teachers, new hired teachers are here. They'll be sitting in this place right now going through stuff. School opens September second. Um, I actually was in the, um, classroom today. Central School had their fret, their kindergarten orientation today. Tatum Manhattan's are next week. It's always a fun, fun day. Gino remembers his times in the Ole Miss football, freshman loved it. I was in the classroom with the extended day kindergarten parents. There are twenty five sets of very happy parents there. Um, as they were, that was the first group I got, the first time I got to meet those kids and those parents who were who who won that lottery, so that was nice. Um, the, it's always interesting. Gino could probably go many more stories, but it's always interesting to see which kids don't want parents to leave the classroom and which parents don't want to leave the classroom. Because sometimes it's where parents have a hard time getting away to leave the kids' kindergarten than it is for the kids in kindergarten. Um, and that's it.
That's great. Any questions?
All right, um, for me, I don't really have much. It's just more reiterating, um, building off of what Mr. Klaus said. Um, thank you for those of you who looked through the board goals. Um, thank you, Jess, for going through those with me. We worked on that. That third one was the workshop, we workshop the one about looking at advocacy. And so take a look at that. Um, it is definitely a goal when you look at the, it is, it's a smart goal, so it's laid out. But, um, there are things that we need to start thinking about to cross off the list, and one of them being a public statement. Um, kind of a public notice on advocacy, possibly more like informing the public of what our stance is and of Possibly more like informing the public of what our stance is and of let it, and possibly educating the public on how they could get involved, right? Like who they should reach out to. So that's something I'd like to talk about in the future. So maybe September is a good time for us to discuss that. And then also the joint meeting with the commissioners, which I thought was really fruitful. I thought was constructive. I appreciated, I was grateful that we are, we're sitting at the table together in public session, able to really talk about all the concerns we both have on both sides. And we did end that meeting with the agreement that we would come to an official or formal agreement at the end of the school year, which would involve a revenue sharing agreement for the pilot monies to offset some of the costs for the, the students that would be coming into the school systems as a result of that project. And we did talk about this, we're not talking about like changing money. But this helps us maintain status quo without additionally burdening, burdening the taxpayers that aren't. Okay. Questions for me? I'm going to say there's no public comment, but officially we'll say, we'll open it for public comments. Seeing none. We will go on to items for approval. Governance. Acceptance of monthly HIV vandalism violence report. Approval of biosecurity drill. Approval of the multiple first readings of policies and regulations. Approval to abolish a policy involving COVID and healthcare settings. And resolution to approve the 25, 26 student handbooks for all elementary, middle and high schools. Motion? Meg and, and Matt? Discussion, comments? I know we discussed a lot of the policies when Matt was giving his update. So thank you.
I just wanted to say for the student handbooks, I really did, I thought that the way that in middle school, they put that chart together with like first event, like just seeing it visually like that, that was fantastic.
They get quite granular.
Yeah. But like, because versus where it was, where it was just all like listed, like one after the other. I just thought that was, hold on.
All right, Mike?
Ms. Dress?
Yes.
Ms. Dress and Claire? Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Vice President Hooker?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Curriculum and special education approval, field trips, conferences, travel, overnight field trips. Resolution between the Board of Ed and the Jewish Family and Children's Services. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Hampton Learning Academy for out of district placement. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Yale School for out of district placement. Resolution to approve overnight athletic trips for the 25, 26 school year. Resolution between the Board of Ed and NJESA, FEA, legal one. To provide a virtual.
Yeah, this should be a slap between NJ, VA.
Okay, okay. All right. I felt like I was like, wait a second. For virtual HIV law presentation. Resolution between the Board of Ed and young audiences. Arts for learning. Resolution between the NJSIAA and DAANJ membership for 25, 26 school year. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Gloucester County Special Services. Resolution between the DOE Commissioner to approve activities for highly effective teachers. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Melissa Clark for services. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Amplify for M-class assessment platform training for teachers. Resolution between the Board of Ed and Barb Golab to provide full day professional development. Resolution between the Board of Ed and the District Management Group for renewal of Mr. Klaus's membership. Resolution between the Board of Ed and EduSeer for online instruction for a student. Motion? Jess and Greg? Questions?
I had, I just out of curiosity on G, the young audiences arts for learning. What is that? I just love to know what, what counts. Do you know?
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't know the exact PD, but that's, we have PD for our final election. And we have that in November and it's, we invite countywide teachers to come. Rob is actually on vacation. He's on, he's in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean on a cruise. But last year we did this with PE with an R and more language. And all of this PD combined this year cost $400 total after the income from the schools. So this is part of our following up on the finals. Auto from last year. PD and, like I said, we opened the county schools and we get most of that money back.
I actually wasn't even questioning the expense. It was more like, what's really, yeah.
I don't know specifically what, what this one is, but I know this is part of Rob's effort. Before that position went into existence, a lot of times our PD focused on literacy, math. And a lot of times our final performance were less. So Rob has been able to identify these advocacy groups. This is one of, one of the most prominent ones in the area. So we, we couldn't figure out what, we don't know exactly what the session title is. We can come back with that.
But it'll be actual arts instructions by actual arts.
I believe this is the same group who did the shadow.
Yes. It's that.
I was happy to see it on there.
And they're doing something with Tatum this year.
Thank you.
Mike?
Ms. Dress?
Yes.
Ms. Esselblatt? Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Vice President Hooker?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Personnel. Approval of new personnel transfer, salary upgrades, mentoring, extracurricular coaching placements and leaving, vacancies and resignations. Resolution to approve Ms. Barringer to complete health screenings for the special ed department. Resolution to approve Katie Barnes to complete private for summer meetings. Resolution to approve Chrissy Gill to provide student lessons. Resolution to approve Ms. Henges to perform student testing. Resolution to approve Ms. DiTulio to perform WIDA screener testing. Resolution to approve Ms. Radovich for 101 support. Resolution to approve compensation for Ms. Vermont, move her classroom. Resolution to approve compensation for Mr. Russo to move his classroom. Resolution to approve Rowan students to complete their, their clinical experiences. Resolution to, oh, sorry. Approval to submit the executive county superintendent completion of, superintendent miracles number two and five. Resolution to approve compensation for Ms. McGraw-Dee for summer enrichment. Resolution to approve compensation for Ms. Polly Carpo and Ms. Slotsky for cross training on Genesis. Resolution to approve a teacher for six period class. Resolution to approve employees' compensation for kindergarten orientation. Resolution to approve employees for training and support for mental teacher orientation. Resolution to approve employees' compensation for attending kindergarten orientation central. And resolution to approve employees' compensation for mandatory transportation training. Motion? Okay, Jess and Meg? Comments, questions? I want to thank Ms. Vermont for shifting to French, which is, oh, English, which is very cool. I'm excited to have that role.
And then the enrollment bonus. Is that, I mean, I actually, if it's what I think it is, I love it because I think summer enrichment, when we start to look at what other things can we do? So that is exactly what.
That's exactly what that was. Yes, Ms. McGraw-Dee's class. And of all the classes that we ran over this summer, creative writing, Disney, art, math was the, the math enrichment was the course with the highest enrollment. That was Ms. McGraw-Dee's classes. So she earned that bonus. For every student above 15, teachers got a $25 kickback per student.
I love incentivizing.
Yeah.
I mean.
Kind of unique. You don't see it too much in, in our own world. It was great that we were able to negotiate that with the HEA.
I love that.
I will also just say, I mean, I just think it's wonderful to pay them compensation for moving their classrooms. As someone who had to move. With all the art supplies, maybe three or four times, like, that is fantastic because it just, I just think it helps with morale and showing how the teachers are.
Hi, Mike?
Ms. Esselblatt?
Yes.
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Vice President Hooker?
Yes.
Ms. Dress?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Okay, business and finance. Approval of tuition reimbursements to be paid out of the 25, 26 budget. Approved the district disaster recovery plan, the incident response plan. Approved Inspiret urgent care for drug screening services. Approved Mongol associates for auditorium seat replacement. Approved generation services to perform theatrical lighting and audio improvements. Approved the tuition rates for the 26, 27 school year. Approval of boarding contracts to the auditorium renovations and alterations at the middle school. Payment of bills, budget transfers, board secretary's report and cash sum report. Motion? Linda and Greg? Questions or comments?
I just want to make one comment, just going back to like the middle school auditorium stuff. I think it's fantastic that we got the bids and everything. And I was just thinking about how, I know that there's lots of, they're going to be shifting, right? And everyone's going to need to be patient with that. I'm also just thinking about how we've put so much time and energy into the music middle school program. And to just make sure that those, you know what I mean? That those plans are in place because I think that if it's something where it's like, okay, wait, then there's not this phase and we're just going to have to scramble into a classroom or this or that, that just it might, students might get.
Might lose the momentum.
Yes. And that's, that, thank you. That's what I'm saying. I just want to make, I just want to put that on record. I know that, I'm sure that's all being thought of, but I just want to put that on record that we've made such gains in that area. I would hate to see like students maybe missing lessons because they don't know where to go or this and that and get frustrated and then be like, well, then I don't want to participate.
Okay, what other comments? Okay, Mike?
Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Vice President Hooker?
Yes.
Ms. Dress?
Yes.
Ms. Esselblatt?
Yeah.
President Crook?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes, the regular meeting and retreat on July 21st, 2025. Motion? Meg? Jess? Question? I mean, anyone catch anything? All right, Mike?
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Vice President Hooker?
Yes.
Ms. Dress? Was it a yes?
Yes.
Sorry. Ms. Hollingworth?
Yes.
President Crook?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to, oh, wait. Any, any items for future consideration? Motion to close? Linda and Greg?